Okay, everybody ready? Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, January 12th, 2022 Special Board Meeting for the Mill Creek Township School District Board of Directors. Tonight, we are meeting at the Mill Creek Education Center. As we are meeting this evening, we're all adhering to wearing masks according to the Mill Creek Township School District Health and Safety Plan. You can also view this evening's agenda as well as several additional informational items on our website, www.mtdmtsd.org. In addition, please visit us and like us on our Facebook page, Mill Creek Township School District. As always, I'd like to remind all speakers, court team members, and board members because of their masks to speak clearly and distinctly into their microphone so you can be heard by all of attendees this evening, whether they are here in person or viewing us on Zoom or YouTube. Thank you. Mr. Senator, roll call, please.
Mr. Dean.
Here.
Ms. Philbeck.
Here.
Mr. Kobilka.
Here.
Mr. Lindener.
Here.
Ms. McClintock.
Here.
Ms. Newsome.
Here.
Mr. Winchell.
Here.
Mrs. Winchell.
Here.
Dr. Roberts.
Here.
And Attorney Senate.
Here.
Okay. 1.02, Approval of the Agenda. Just like to say on this approval of the agenda, I believe we have some three-minute speakers, Mrs. Senator.
There are people who inquire.
Right, so there's three-minute, but there any individuals on those, they requested the three minutes this evening to speak. Any of those speakers, their topic related specifically to the agenda item this evening, which is the school board candidate interviews. Okay. For the other speakers, we will respect your intent to speak for the three minutes. However, we will move those to back behind the interviews for the candidates from the standpoint of the candidates are here and scheduled to speak and then be approved. And so we will circle back for the three-minute comments before item four, old business. Okay. Okay. So, so can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, nay. Motion passes. 1.03, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the free, public, and democratic republic of the United States, with the right to live, eat, and drink, and to wear the same clothes as all Americans.
Okay. Jumping to 3.01, School Board Candidate Interviews. So just for the, for the public's view, so we are here tonight to fill the two-year board seat left vacant by Gary Winchell when he captured both the two-year and the four-year seat during the election. The process was initiated a few weeks ago when all interested candidates completed an application as well as a questionnaire. The board received six applications, which were then reviewed and ranked one through six, with the three finalists proceeding to an in-person interview this evening. The board will interview each candidate separately, asking each candidate the same questions. Each board member will rotate their turn, asking each candidate the same question. In addition, each candidate will have the opportunity for opening and closing statement. At the conclusion of the interview process, the board will rank the candidates one through three, with the highest ranking candidate being selected and consequently sworn in this evening. The new board member will serve on the personnel committee with Mr. Dean as the chairperson. Okay, we're ready for the first candidate. Yes, please, up at the podium. Welcome.
Good evening.
So this evening, the board will interview yourself. Each candidate will be asked this number of questions. Each board member will have a question, and they'll rotate through, and each candidate will receive the same questions. And so we'll start with an opening comment, an opening comment, and then you'll be offered an opportunity for a closing comment at the end. So if you'd like to make an opening comment of two or three minutes, and then we'll start with the questions.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd just like to start by saying thank you for considering me for this opening on the board. I have served the district as well as I can for the last, probably, well, my boys are sophomores this year. So I have a, I've spent a lot of time as a volunteer leader as best I can, and I would love to serve as a member of the Board of Directors if you'd have me.
Okay, well, I'll start with the first question. What motivated Gary Winchell, President of the Board? What motivates you to apply for the open school director position?
So, as I mentioned, I've been a volunteer leader for many years. Public school education is a passion of mine. I grew up, went to public high school. My family was involved in the school board in the district where I attended, and when my children started at Chestnut Hill, I immediately pitched in and have been involved ever since. But I do believe that our district is at a challenging time. All of the districts across the, across the world, obviously, are in a challenging time. But I felt like, and honestly, several people have asked me to consider a role on the board, and, and I guess after a long time, you finally say, well, if it's meant to be, it's meant to be.
Thank you.
So Mike Linder, Vice President for the Board. If you could share with us, what are the primary roles of a school board director?
I believe the most important role of a school board director is to be the caretaker of our children. The, the board must serve not only the community as a whole, but most importantly, our children, and prepare them to go out and be the best that they can be in the world, which will in turn benefit our entire community. The better we prepare our children, the better our entire community will be by doing so. Obviously, that role has a fiscal responsibility, it has a educational responsibility, it has a relationship with the community responsibility, but at the end of the day, the school board is here to serve the children of our district.
Thank you. Ms. Lupicek, Jason Dean here, I have the third question for you. First off, thank you for being here. Appreciate you coming out and putting this effort in. My question is, what are the most critical issues facing the Mill Creek Township School District School Board, and how would you help to resolve them?
The most critical ones, I believe, are, at this moment in time, fiscal, the health and safety, obviously, not of, only of our children, but of all of the staff and employees and anybody who enters our district each day. And then also, there's, there's obviously a rift in our community on a number of key issues right now, and so whatever, however the board can help to bring people together as best possible, even when we don't agree on issues, I do believe that that is one of the critical issues facing our board right now.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janice Philbeck, school board member. Thank you for being here. And my question is, tell us what you feel are some of the school district's strengths and weaknesses, and where do you see the Mill Creek Township School District moving forward?
So strengths, I would say the size of our district is a strength. It's also a weakness. So on the one hand, we can leverage the size of our district to, to help give more opportunities to our students. In some ways, our size makes us, makes it a little more challenging to be nimble, to be flexible, to meet all the needs of all of our students. Certainly, a huge strength of our district is our people. We have, we have amazing people in our district, but I feel like we could do more to help them to be able to do their jobs more easily, to be able to not necessarily have to bend over backwards as much as some of them have to do day to day. So I appreciate the work that our people do, but I'd love to see them have to work a little less hard to, to get done what they're getting done.
Hi, I'm Mike Kobilka, and my question is, help us understand how you would balance and prioritize educational programming with spending regarding the budget and taxes.
Ooh, that's a tricky one. I think of this one, honestly, every time I see the chart that shows that as a district, we spend less than almost all of the districts across the state of Pennsylvania. I, I think on the one hand, we're very proud of ourselves for having done that, for having been fiscally responsible and, and cut over the years. The flip side of that is I think a lot of our families would like to see us be able to say that we are investing in our children. And so I think that that's a tough balancing act, to say that we want to invest in education, we want to do the right things. We clearly have made the steps to try to do the basic improvements to our facilities, but making sure that we are looking forward and being strategic and not reacting, but preparing ourselves for the future and making sure that, like I said earlier, we are creating children who will be able to give back to our community and, and really be able to invest in their future.
Thank you. Janine McClintock, I have the next question, and it is two parts. So, can you hear me? The first part is, what kind of relationship should the Mill Creek Township School Board and, should the Mill Creek Township School District and the board have with its community, parents, families, and staff? The second part, what can the district and the board do to foster that relationship?
So, for that question, I think the answer is in the question, in that I, I believe relationship is the key word. We need to be able to relate, relate to each other on the board, relate to people working in the district, relating to students, relating to parents, and relating to community members at large. And so that is a give and take when we relate. We listen, we hear, we take that input and do the best that we can for all of those stakeholders by aggregating the best ideas from wherever they come from. I really believe in collaborative leadership. I really believe in improving every step of every process that we touch and we work on. And oftentimes, those best ideas come from every aspect of our township, and that's part of this board's role, is to represent all of those different facets when we come into this room and make decisions. Did I answer the second part? Okay, thank you.
Sally Newsome, I think mine's a little long. A majority vote is used to make decisions on a board. However, there are times when a consensus is sought regarding more important issues. You are in the minority, you believe that you are correct. How would you handle this before, during, and after the voting process?
So I'm a little bit of a strange duck in that I understand just enough parliamentary procedure to be dangerous, and I think it's a fascinating tool where the voice of the majority does not outweigh the voice of the minority. At the end of the day, yes, we vote on things and majority rules, but a lot of the hard work comes in beforehand, a lot of the hard work comes in to make sure that the actions that are coming before the board have been thoroughly vetted, and that there's not always just one side and another side. Sometimes there's bringing those pieces together into a third solution. Sometimes there's a solution that isn't even in this room, and we need to go and try to find it before we can make a decision. So I, I do believe that the minority voice must be heard, even if at the end of the day, there's not a way into incorporating it into our solution.
Hello, Kimberly. My name is Shirley Winchell. Over the past 18 months, the school board, along with the administration, was required to decide on a course of action balancing educational needs of students and safety, which included parental choice and masking. Which cri, excuse me, what criteria would you use in making that decision?
Well, I am a parent of three children in the district, so I have seen what happens when students are virtual, I have seen what happens when students are in the classroom, and I can say without a doubt that students are doing better in the classroom. I will say that this district has come tremendously far in the last two years from that first fateful day of March 13th, when we were not prepared to be virtual, and our teachers did the best they could with what they could at that time. Having said that, I do believe that our goal should be to have as many in-classroom days as we can, and I also believe that we have tremendous medical professionals in our area, and relying on them to help guide us versus those of us who don't have a medical background, I think is important, because they're the ones who can help us to understand how best to move forward, to aggregate recommendations from the various bodies, which unfortunately is not always consistent, but we are getting government input, we're getting PDE input, we're getting as many different inputs, and we can just do the best with the information that we receive from credible bodies.
Back to the top of the house here, I guess. So number, number nine, currently, the Mill Creek Township School District School Board is made up by the diverse group of individuals. What qualities, characteristics, and/or strengths do you have to offer to this team?
So, as I mentioned earlier, I, I'm a passionate believer in collaborative leadership. I, I believe that I bring a track record of having tried to work together with various organizations, whether that's the Mill Creek Education Foundation, whether that's across PTAs, whether that's whoever we can collab- PTAs, whether that's whoever we can collaborate and bring together. I'm also passionate about process improvement. So wherever I see something that can be made better, my goal is always to leave it better than where I found it. So while I have a undergraduate degree in engineering, I have experience in, in education and have been working towards a degree in, in, in secondary ed. And so I really think that I can bring a parental view, I can bring a community view, but I can also bring that process improvement and ability to try to help the district improve wherever we can.
Okay, that concludes the questions. Would you like me to close any comments? Two or three minutes?
Okay. I, I think I've answered most, most of what I wanted to say was included in the questions that were asked of me this evening. But I, I do want to say that what's, one of the things that's most important to me is that we are doing what's right for every child in this district. It's, it's important that we are not, when we talk about the minority view, the minority view does not apply to our children. We cannot leave any child behind as we move forward. And that's my biggest concern through the pandemic is that across the country, the, the gap between the students who are already performing well and the students who are underperforming has only widened. And so I think that it is our charge as a district to do whatever we can to keep that from happening here and to try to close that divide as best we can and make sure that we're providing opportunities for every one of our children. And so that's why I'm here this evening, and I appreciate your consideration for me for the school board.
Thank you. Okay, the next, okay, yes. Next candidate is Chris Busco. Evening, Mr. Busco. The board will interview each candidate separately, asking each candidate the same questions. Each board member will rotate their turn, asking each candidate the same question. In addition, each candidate will have the opportunity for an opening and closing statement. At the conclusion of the interview process with all the candidates, the board will rank the candidates one through three, the highest ranking candidate being selected and consequently sworn in this evening. The new board member will serve on the personnel committee with Mr. Dean as the chairperson. So if you'd like to introduce yourself and give us an opening comment, and I'll start there with the first question.
Yes, I would. Thank you very much. And, excuse me. My name is Christopher Busco. I have been on the board before for six years. I am a Mill Creek resident lifelong, graduated from McDowell, graduated from Gannon University with a BS in chemistry, business owner for 26-plus years in the city or in Mill Creek. And I'd like to just say what I bring to the board is a little bit of consistency. You know, we've been here before. We have some tough things going on, COVID, budget, stuff like that. I can jump in, kind of continue where we left off. And with that?
Okay, I have the first question. My first question is, what motivated you to apply for the open school director position?
Yes, thank you for the question. The reason I applied is I did run, won the primary, and just didn't quite make it to the finals. And being on the board for six years, I was here when we hired Dr. Roberts, when we went out for our bond issue, looking for, you know, redoing our building infrastructure, all important things that we have to continue to do. Also, at the start of COVID, we were here, we hired Dr. Roberts in that time. And I think the one thing I do want to see is how he continues with his work and help him to finish. He's brought some great ideas, and I think he's starting to put together a great team. And I want to help him finish that. And that's why I applied.
Thank you.
I have the second question, Chris. What are the primary roles of the school board director?
Thank you, Mike. There's basically three primary roles. You're involved in the budget, you approve the budget, you work, you have a little bit of working area on the budget, you hire and fire the superintendent, and then you also deal with approve policies and procedures. Those are the three major issues. I mean, we have a little bit of wiggle room in our budget, stuff like that, where we can't cut or add, but those are the highlights, I would say.
Thank you.
Mr. Busco, thank you for being here this evening. Jason Dean, I have your third question.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
What are the most critical issues facing the Mill Creek Township School District School Board? And how would you help to resolve them?
Most critical issue, I think, right now would be the COVID issues surrounding the school. Other issues would be the budget that's coming up, and we have teacher contracts that are coming up. How do I work to resolve those? I think the biggest thing that we have to do is we have to look at the, we have to gather the data and make sure that we're just getting good data and make our decisions based on those issues. It's not a personal issue. It's not a political issue. We have to put the kids first and keep them in school. And we know that that's the important thing. And, you know, so when it comes to the budget, you know, that's going to be a big fall, you know, come this fall, you know, come this year. We also have the teacher contract. Those are the big items facing us. And I can, you know, sit down and help where needed.
Thank you.
Any other question? You're good with that?
Hi, Chris, I'm Janice.
Yep, how you doing, Janice?
How are you? Thanks for being here. Tell us what you feel are some of the school district's strengths and weaknesses? And where do you see the Mill Creek Township School District moving forward?
Okay, let's say moving forward, I see us always, I see it going up. I don't see us stagnating or going behind. Strength and weaknesses. You know, the big strength, I mentioned before, you know, we have a new superintendent with some, you know, fresh ideas that I think is, can really help bring McDowell intermediate and everybody up and really create a, a better, you know, better statement for Erie schools. Okay? Problem areas, I don't like to see that if there's a problem or a bad area. You know, we, in business, we look, if somebody can't do a job, we look at how do we bring them up to that, that job? And so I think if we have a bad area or negative area, we look at fixing it. I mean, if you go back, when I started on the board, even before I was on the board, we had major financial issues. And the board went out and we found Aaron. And I think that speaks for itself. We cleaned up those issues. We didn't dwell on what was bad, what was wrong. We fixed it, and I think that's key. You know, there's multiple examples, I think. But so I don't look at any particular weakness. I mean, I think even like, if you go back a year, communications, we brought Katie on because we knew that was an issue. She basically works by herself. She has a little help, but she's redone our website, brought up the interaction with the, you know, stakeholders and everybody involved. So parents can get the information. They have one source for it now. Is it still a work in progress? Yes. But it's moving forward. So I don't like to, I don't want to say negatives, but those are a couple areas that we're working on, I think.
Thank you.
Chris, I've got, excuse me, question number five. Help us understand how you would balance and prioritize educational programming with spending regarding the budget and taxes?
Prioritizing the budget and everything, kind of a common theme, you know, budget time. You have to, again, I'll just say you have to look at data before we, you know, if we're going in to cut a program or raise taxes, this, that's always a kind of a common question, I think, is, let me give you an example, I guess. You know, previous, when we talk about raising taxes, there's always a discussion whether we should go to the index, half the index. We have to look at the data and what we can, what we think we can afford. If there's a class that might not be full, we have to look at the data way out. If there's only two kids in that class, do we really need it? Is it affecting? And move on from there. But we have to keep in mind that we just can't willy-nilly raise taxes. There is a finite amount of money we have.
If I could just remind everyone to please speak in a microphone, a couple of the audience saying they can't hear the dialogue. So just ask everyone to clearly speak in a microphone. Thank you.
Hi, Chris, thanks for coming. I have question number six, and it has two parts. The first, what kind of relationship should the Mill Creek Township School District and the board have with its, with its community, parents, family, and staff? The second part, what can the district and the board do to foster that relationship?
Well, I think the biggest thing is we all have to remember we're a board of nine, not one. So if we're out in the public and, you know, we can't speak for the board, we can take the information and bring it back. Talk about it in executive session if it's a personnel matter, talk about it at the board meeting. Second, you know, the public, you know, has access to us via the meetings. They have email, phone, they can leave messages. But the biggest thing is if we are at a PTA meeting or out, you know, we can bring that information back. And I think it's actually pretty good because when I started coming, there was nobody in the audience. This goes back eight, nine years. There was nobody. And I think Mike might even remember some of that. After the third time I was here, they asked, what do you, do you need something? I'm like, no, I just want to see what's going on. So I'm glad that parents are coming and talking. So I think that's good. I hope that answers it.
Hi, Chris.
How you doing, Sally?
A majority vote is used to make decisions on the board. However, there are times when a consensus is sought regarding more important issues. You are in the minority. You believe that you are correct. How would you handle this before, during, and after the voting process?
That's, to me, kind of a simple one. It's not personal. It's a vote. We can get, you know, we can get behind our vote and, you know, cheerlead it. But the point is, it's a group of nine, and at the end of the day, we're here for the kids. So if you don't like my, you know, item I brought up and it fails, I'm okay with that. If I have a chance, I might try to persuade you, but, you know, at the end of the day, again, it's just, it's not personal. It's about the kids. It's about the board. But I would say that having a split vote, you know, at a vote, having a seven-two or five-four, I think is good. It just shows that we're not rubber stamping an agenda. And it's, I don't think of it as a bad decision. So at the end of the day, I think it's good.
Hi, Chris. I have the eighth question. Over the past 18 months, the school board, along with the administration, was required to decide on a course of action balancing educational needs of students and safety, which included parent choice and masking. What criteria would you use in that decision-making?
So your, your question is about masking or about?
How do you find that balance between safety and the basic educational needs?
I guess, again, anytime you make a decision, you have to have the data behind it. And unfortunately, COVID has become more political than factual. I mean, that's my opinion. And I think there's a lot of data out there that we have to look at. And, you know, before, I think everybody knew kids belonged in school. But there was concern about, you know, there was no vaccine. We didn't know. We all agreed to shut down for two weeks. But we all agree now, and even we knew back then, kids belonged in school. They were running around with each other, they were doing stuff. But now's different. We have new data. And I think the biggest thing about that is we need to have good collection of data, make sure it's factual. And I mean, you know, not just CDC data. I mean, Israel is probably where the best information comes out. When this started, I always watched that. But I think that's the only way to do it. And if we base it on data, nobody can fault you. And I think that's key with anything. Good data and good decisions, you can stand behind those decisions.
Thank you.
Chris, last question. Currently, the Mill Creek Township School District School Board is made up of a diverse group of individuals. What qualities, characteristics, and/or strengths do you have to offer to this team?
Well, as a business owner, you know, obviously, I've been here, went through McDowell, went through all the Mill Creek schools. My elementary school is no longer there. But the, being a business owner, I think, brings the biggest thing. And that was part of the reason why I chose to run is Lisa decided not to run. She's a business owner. We lost John as an engineer, but we have two engineers. And it's important, I think, to have balance on the board. We have teacher input, we have business input, we need, we have some legal input besides Tim, but we also have, we need, you also need retired people on the board. There's a lot of work that goes on outside of the board meetings. And so I think, you know, I kind of bring to the board, I'm just a no-nonsense kind of guy. I'm kind of straightforward, say it like it is, and I move on. I'm not going to write you a, a three-page proposal that'll tell you the price of a part. I'm just going to send you an email with the price and the, the stuff. That's just me. And I think that we need that on the board, too. And so I do have, and plus, I've been six years as a board member, so we can, I can pick up where we left off. It doesn't, you know, I think that just adds a little bit of flavor to it.
So Chris, you have some closing remarks, two or three minutes? Give us some closing remarks?
I guess in my closing remarks, I'd just like to thank everybody for the time and everybody that did come out to interview for the position. I believe that, you know, this is kind of like a, a very tough job. It's a full-time job with no benefits and no pay, just a lot of grief from parents and tax hold, taxpayers. But it's honorable work, and I think it's good work. It's, it's very, it's very, it makes you feel good at the end of the day because at the end of the day, we, all we're here for is the kids. We want to make sure that we can give the kids the best education that they just, that they want and give them everything they need to excel in what they want to do. You know, my business background is kind of no-nonsense. We need to go out, you know, we, we're quoting a job or we need to- a job, or we need to, you know, deal with employees and stuff. That's what I do. I just have to deal with it and move on. So I'd just like to thank everybody. I know your time's valuable, and it's a tough job. I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you, Chris. Feel free to grab a seat there. Our last candidate is Robert Ward. He'll be joining us via Zoom this evening. Okay, Mr. Ward, can you hear us? Mr. Ward, you're muted. If you could unmute. Mr. Ward, if you could unmute your microphone, please? Okay, Mr. Ward, can you hear us? Hello, Mr. Ward, can you hear us? Still muted. Okay. Perhaps turn the volume up on your computer, Mr. Ward. We still can't hear you. You're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Any better at this point, folks?
There we go. We got it. We got it. Thank you.
Well, my strength isn't technical.
Okay, gotcha. So, Mr. Ward, the, the board have interviewed two candidates, and we're interviewing you this evening, asking yourself the same questions. Each board member will rotate their turn by asking each candidate the same question. In addition, each candidate will have the opportunity for an opening and closing statement. At the conclusion of the interview process, the board will rank the candidates, one through three, with the highest ranking candidate being selected, and consequently being sworn in this evening. The new board, board member then will assume his seat and will serve on the Personnel Committee with Mr. Dean as the chairperson. So with that, I'd like to have two or three minutes, if you'd like to have an opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And I appreciate the accommodations you've made to let me participate from home. I'm about 48 hours after surgery, so I might still be a little fuzzy. I think what motivated me when I saw the ad in the paper in December was this belief that it's been a long career in law for me, and as I'm winding it down, I, I know that I'll go absolutely stir-crazy in retirement if I don't keep busy. One of the things that I've always kind of monitored, kept things, tabs on, were things like the way local government runs, way local school districts operate. And so when I saw the opportunity to fill vacancy, I thought I'd step up, essentially make an offer of my services. I'm, as I say, winding down my practice of law, but I do intend to stay busy in semi-retirement, I guess I could characterize it as. So that's what motivated me.
Okay. Kind of leads into that first question, then. What motivated you to apply for the open school district position? So if there's anything else you'd like to expound on, I guess?
Well, and if there is at least one or two other things, you know, we, we live in a, and I think Mr. Senate can verify this, we, we live in a litigious environment nowadays. I mean, after 42 years of practicing law, I've seen things change dramatically. I've seen people who you used to be cordial and congenial with react and act in very different ways. I've, I've seen the videos of hostile school board meetings and, and parent anger and, and school board reluctance to deal with things. And, you know, those are the kinds of things that aren't going to move the football down the field for the kids at all. They, they just become a digression or a sideline. And, and that's another reason why, if we could turn back the clock, let's get back to a time when this worked well, when people worked with each other. And, and again, I'm sure the rest of the people who have interviewed for this job have all said, you know, it's all about the kids. Sounds like a custody case where the best interest of the children is supposed to be at issue. So that, that's another aspect of the motivation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Linder.
Thank you, Robert. My name is Mike Linder. I'm the vice president for the board. And my question is, what are the primary roles of the school board director?
Well, we, we have to have some kind of administrative body to translate from the top down how the school district's going to be run. We have to have folks who are going to work with their superintendent, with the teachers' unions, and with the parents, and with the children, to figure out a way to get the most out of whatever the experience will yield. And so as school board members, you're creating policies, you're acting as liaisons, you're making some tough decisions when they've got to be made. And, and I suppose the last two years has been a period where some of the toughest decisions ever in the history of being a school board member have had to be made. But in the absence of a school board trying to control the dissemination of information and the administration of a school district's responsibilities, we'd have total chaos. So you are the, the group that keeps things running. You're the engine.
Thank you.
Mr. Ward, Jason Dean here. I have the next question for you, number three. What are the most critical issues facing the Mill Creek Township School District School Board, and how would you help to resolve them?
Well, they're, they're probably not facing just the Mill Creek Township School Board. I'm sure they're facing a host of school boards across the state and across the country. The, the hot-button issues right now, the, the things like, what do we do about remote learning? What do we do about in-class learning? How do we handle safety issues? And, and the fact is that there's a lot of homework that has to be done when you're, I suppose, a school board participant, to educate yourself, to learn more about how to decide those tough issues. Again, given the fact that nine people are making the decision, and it's, it's a little like how a jury operates. I sat on a jury three times in my career as a lawyer, and it's hard to get 12 people in a room and get them to reach consensus fairly quickly. I'm not sure it's any easier with nine, but the process is somewhat similar. And again, because of the difficulty of the issues that school boards have faced these last two years, I mean, more than just the standard, oh, my God, we got to raise taxes, or, oh, my God, teacher contracts are coming up for renewal. You've, you've had COVID, you've had masking, you've had vaccine issues. So it's, it's really a plethora of other issues that really send you scurrying to educate yourselves the best way you know how. Hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Hi, Robert. I'm Janice Philbeck, and I have the fourth question. Thank you for being here. Tell us what you feel are some of the school district's strengths and weaknesses, and where do you see the Mill Creek Township School District moving forward?
Well, I, I don't know if all of you know my background. My kids went to the Catholic grade school system, K through 12, and, and I went through the public school system. I attended McDowell High School and Westminster Junior High School back in the Dark Ages. And, and so as a parent, I saw a comparison between the Catholic system and the public system. And, and the common elements in both those systems were there, getting the best amount of education you can for the price that people can afford. I, I think Mill Creek faces issues of trying to maintain a, a reasonable tax base and, and a budget, while at the same time trying to continue to offer opportunities to kids in the public school system that, that give them kind of a level playing field to play on. I mean, you know, some of the federal and state laws that have mandated additional programs for kids, things like learning aids and so forth, I mean, they, they all add to the budget, but you have to be careful about how you spend the, the money to make sure you can spread it as far as you can. So it's always going to be a question of money. It's always going to be a question of seeking out what the kids will benefit by most. I'm sure there's school districts out there who have concerns about having to cut back on certain things, you know, whether they're, they're having to dial back the investment in sports and arts just to make sure they can still continue to offer quality education. I don't know that Mill Creek has that problem. I'm not saying that we're an extremely affluent community, but it strikes me that when I see how the schools are run, they're not cutting too many corners. They're making available as much as most reasonably affluent school districts would be able to offer. So, and I don't mean that in a bad way. I mean, I think a lot of people moved to Mill Creek because this is an attractive school district. It's an attractive school system. It's no secret. I mean, I was doing real estate work throughout my practice, and clients would tell me, yeah, we're looking in the Mill Creek area, want to get our kids into the Mill Creek system. And it isn't just because they thought you had a good reputation. It's because they did their homework and found out that it was a good school educational opportunity for their kids. So hopefully, that can continue, and not just for a three-year plan or a five-year plan, but ad nauseam.
Thank you.
Good evening, Attorney Ward. My name is Mike Kabilka, and my question is, help us understand how you would balance and prioritize educational programming with spending regarding the budget and taxes?
Wow, that's, that's an interesting one. It's, I've been in, in a law firm with as many as nine, 10 folks, and I've been a sole practitioner since 2003. And, and what I learned while being a sole practitioner is that overhead can eat you alive. So in a way, I've also become a businessman when I'm a sole practitioner. I, I know that we have this tension between the funding and programs and, and possibilities that you'd like to offer the kids. And it appears, at least from what I've done, and I haven't done extensive research, you know, over a long period of time, but just as a taxpayer in Mill Creek, it appears that the school district has done a reasonably good job of using the taxpayer dollars wisely. There's, there's been an occasional hiccup here and there over the last 15 or 20 years. Some of those things made local news stories, but for the most part, it's, it's been a prudent and, and money-conscious group that has been passing the budget year to year. Prioritizing things is like anything else. When, when you set the budget for the year, and you go through each line item, and you say, well, how's this going? How's that going? Whether it's transportation, or whether it's after-school, before-school programs, and, you know, you, you always have to figure, well, there's been a cost of living increase in some of those, so things generally float up. And if you keep doing that, eventually, you're going to find out, well, wait a second, then we've really got to float the taxes up quite a bit to cover those things. And it's just a tension. I, I don't know that you can pick any one area and say, well, we want to prioritize that, with probably the exception of the education. Going to school is, is more than just getting an education. It's, it's an opportunity for the kids to participate in sports, arts, and, and it's an opportunity for them to socialize, clubs, all those things, all those things that make them a more well-rounded individual, prepare them, if they intend to go to college, fine, but it prepares them for life after high school, even if they don't go to college. And, and you still, I think, have to focus on the principal burden and the principal responsibility of school districts is to educate. Everything after that is, is additional, and it's wonderful if, if you can do it. But I, I would certainly always be thinking about prioritizing the costs of getting a good core education for the kids.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Ward. My name is Janine McClintock, and I have question number six. What kind of relationship should the Mill Creek Township School District and the board have with its community, parents, families, and staff? The second part of that question, what can the district and the board do to foster that relationship?
Well, there is absolutely one word that sticks out when I think of that, and it's, it's probably one of the words that's been bandied about in, in recent school board, school district, parent battles, and that is transparency. The one thing I don't think a school board can do is play, hide the football, other than with personnel issues. Obviously, as a municipal solicitor, I'm fully aware that personnel issues have a special status that does not get discussed in open, open meetings and so forth. But most everything else, whether it's curriculum, whether it's policies about vaxes and, and masking, that, that should just be right up front, in your face, transparent. No hiding. If the board makes a decision about what they're going to do, you know, no gaming about it. Let everybody know. Because that, that's what will foster the mistrust that exists. Not only the mistrust between parents and a school board, but eventually, in the tension that occurs when teachers are negotiating their latest contract, that'll foster mistrust between the teachers and the school board as well. So that is the single word that I think of when I'm, I'm hopeful that a board is moving forward, and that, that they will practice transparency as one of their first priorities.
Thank you.
Hi, Robert. Sally Newsom, I have the next question. A majority vote is used to make decisions on a board. However, there are times when a consensus is sought regarding more important issues. You are in the minority. You believe that you are correct. How would you handle this before, during, and after the voting process?
Well, I've, I've been in all three of those situations. Been in the majority, been in the consensus, been in the majority, in firms that I've been in, in cases that I've handled. There's, there's a way you have to try to separate your personal feelings from your professional feelings. I think being a school director is probably, in that sense, more of a professional role than bringing your personal feelings to the table. And so there will be times when you are the two in a seven-to-two decision, and you don't pout and cry and whine and moan and stomp out and say, that's it, I quit. I'm not sure that if it's seven-to-two, you're going to be all that successful in lobbying any of the rest of the folks. I hate to come back to that example I used, where you're sitting in the jury room, and your first vote after the, after you've gone back into the room is six-six, and you know you've got six people to convince going one way or the other. You know, I, I do think open discourse is important. If people are unhappy with the outcome of a vote, and they think it's wrong, it's okay for them to say, I, I don't think this is right, wrong, but I don't think you can hold that against the people who voted in the majority. Consensus votes are a funny thing. If, if you've got, you know, a four-three-two split, and you don't really have a solid majority there, then obviously, you've got people who, who want to go a certain direction for other reasons. Again, it's like the concurring opinion in a legal decision. The judge might agree with the outcome, but they write their own concurring opinion to express why they might, may not have felt that the reasoning of the majority author was their reasoning. So I'm sure those situations happen in the course of your nine-person voting. It's, it's just, you keep moving forward. You don't stop, and it doesn't come to a grinding halt when that happens.
Thanks. Good evening. Thank you for applying. My name is Shirley Winchell, and I have the eighth question. Over the past 18 months, the school board, along with the administration, was required to decide on a course of action balancing educational needs of students and safety, which included parental choice and masking. What criteria would you use in that decision-making?
Well, I think when you're faced with tough decisions like those that you've faced the last two years, the first thing you need to do as, as a board director is to educate yourself. One of the dangerous things is to rely upon somebody else's educational take on the subject. Oh, gee, my best friend said that's what's going on. Or I've got a, I've got a buddy who's an epidemiologist, practices at Hammat, told me that blah, practices at Hammat, told me that blah, 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 blah. Well, that might be part of your own personal research, and I, I did a fair amount of that over the last two to three years. I, I was a cynic about a lot of these things that occurred. I was troubled by a lot of the reactions, um, whether it was universal masking, six-foot distancing. Uh, I was troubled by the absence of scientific data indicating that either masks worked or they didn't work, that social distancing worked or it didn't work. Um, and only in recent days, with some of the releases of additional information and with the changing of positions by some of the agencies that everybody put a whole bunch of stock in, whether it was the CDC or the WHO, we, we found out that even those groups can make mistakes. And unfortunately, the victims of the last two years of mistakes are, are a lot of the kids and the students. When you start to look at the statistics of what the the, the pandemic, I'll call it, what, what that has been and what the outcome has been for children um, who were the absolute least likely to suffer from this alleged pandemic. Um, and I say alleged just again because there's a ton of data that has just come out more recently. So, so it's a question of education. Getting up to speed on what you, as an individual, feel about that particular issue, because you're going to be voting your conscience when you vote that way. And maybe, maybe everybody didn't have the foresight to know that things like the suicide rate would increase with so much isolation. You know, one of the other things that seems is that, and I'm just picking on Chicago for the time being. Um, now that all this data has come back out and even the CDC has changed its colors and said, no, 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 get the kids back in the classroom. The teachers' union there doesn't want to go back in the classroom. You got to scratch your head and say, what's their motivation? You, you know, they, they don't mind going out to parties and things. They don't mind having group get-togethers, but they don't want to be back in the classroom with the kids. So I don't know. That, that's education and, and involving yourself and familiarizing yourself with the issues so that you aren't relying upon some other source that may or may not be a, a, a good source to rely upon. Most of, most of those people, all these people on this board are going to be well-educated folks. Um, they've, they've been put in a hard position, and those kinds of folks who are well-educated would say, I'm going to make sure that I do my deep dive, that I check out what is important before I make a decision about this. I mean, the, the other fear, oh gee, we've got to decide this because what if we get sued? I, I had, I've been the solicitor for Harbor Creek Township for 32 years, um, and, and currently I work for a great board, and we never worry about whether we're going to get sued. We, we do things the way that we should. Um, but you know, it's, it's not like you can make every decision that you're going to make predicated on, well, what's the risk of liability? What's the risk of suit? Um, and that, that's just another thing that I, I, I don't want to get sidetracked with. So, um, that's kind of my take on this.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ward, I have the last question. Uh, currently, the Millcreek Township School District, um, school board is made up of a diverse group of individuals. What qualities, characteristics, and/or strengths do you have to offer this team?
Well, I, 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 practicing law for almost 42 years, and I'm sure Mr. Senate can, uh, either shake his head yes or no, has, has presented its series of difficulties and good times, bad times, issues, opportunities. Um, and, and it has put me in a position of having to deal with a variety of people over a variety of issues, whether it's working in my capacity as municipal solicitor, handling a divorce case, handling a personal injury case. I'd like to think that I come to the table with a very pragmatic approach. Um, I, I am, I am not one of these laser-focused people who says there's only one way to do things, and it's my way or the highway. Uh, I'm, I am, to some extent, a conciliator. I've only actually tried divert the half dozen personal injury cases. The rest of them settled. And since the clients were happy, I'm assuming it was for their best interest that they settled. Uh, that's conciliation. I don't need to try everything just so I can put another notch in my belt and say, wow, I, I won that one. Uh, I also think that, that my background, eh, eh, again, in law and as municipal solicitor, having done some work even for some of the school districts when there's conflicts. Um, I've also, uh, participated as a member of a, eh, board, boards of directors. I was the president of Mercier's Child Learning Center, board of directors for five years when they moved down to their location on Ash Street. Um, I was involved in scouts with both of my sons as they were growing up, French Creek Council, uh, working with Steve Yarbenay and folks like that. I've, I've worked with a diverse group of people that way as well. Um, I've worked with some of the county authorities, uh, most everybody in the county's legal department, the city of every legal department. So I deal with a variety of people. Some of them difficult to deal with, um, some of them easy to deal with. They probably think I'm difficult to deal with at times, too. So I'd like to think that in terms of, I'm, I'm a survivor because I can work with just about anybody. Um, and when the appropriate circumstance exists, I can be a conciliator as well. I can work with just about any kind of group.
Okay, thank you. And that brings us to the conclusion of two, uh, two or three minutes for a closing statement, Mr. Ward.
Well, first of all, I, again, I, I appreciate everybody, and I'm sorry I don't know all your first names. It's, uh, I was going to do a little more homework about the board constituency and who your names were, but I apologize for not knowing you individually. Uh, I'm also not a person who had come to all the board meetings and studied how the school board operated. Uh, again, um, it wasn't a lark that I responded to the ad. I've been thinking about this for some time. I, I'm not going to run for township supervisor, and I'm not going to run for county executive. But on a local level, I, I do want to try and make an impact, um, whether it's in, in a position where I'm actually helping make decisions or whether it's just kind of chipping in, um, to help out. Um, and, and this is a great opportunity for me to step up and offer whatever talents I have, uh, limited or otherwise, um, to support the board and to support education where I've lived, uh, my whole life. I grew up on the east side of Millcreek, ended up out here on the west side of Millcreek, um, for the last 34 years. Um, so I do believe in Millcreek, and I got to tell you that the, the boards of supervisors in Harbor Creek Township have begged me to move to Harbor Creek. I've been tempted on occasion. Um, but I, I still want to believe in Millcreek and its school district. Um, so that's really why I'm involved, why I, why I want to stay involved. Um, and again, thank you for all listening, putting up with me. I, uh, probably could have used a shade before I did this, but, um, I'm just, I got to stand up anyways with my walker for the time being. So any other questions?
Nope, that concludes, uh, the questions, and, and thank you, uh, Mr. Ward.
Thank you.
So that concludes the, uh, to the board members. That concludes our, uh, interview process of the three candidates. In front of you is a tally sheet. And I just want to remind you that one is your first choice, two is your second choice, and three is your third choice. So upon your finish of your ranking, if you could fold the page in half and, uh, Linda, and we'll collect them, send them towards Linda, and Linda's got a tally sheet, and then we'll tally them, and then we'll make the announcement. After the announcement, we'll make the appointment.
And Mr. Winchell, could I make a comment while they're counting the votes?
Sure.
Uh, I just wanted to make the comment that, whether you are or not selected this evening, please consider in two years, running for the board. Um, we have some people seated here, a couple of people seated here, myself being one of them, that went through the process that you went through this evening. And I was not selected to full, to fill a two-year seat and decided subsequently to run for the board for a four-year seat. So I would, um, recommend that, all three of you seem very interested in this. Please consider, uh, running for the board in two years.
Shirley, I echo those sentiments. I was going to say about the same thing because, uh, we have three highly qualified people. And of course, Chris has been on and, uh, and was the next runner-up. Uh, so he did put, uh, you know, his hat in the ring. But I would highly encourage the other ones because, um, we always see when we have these openings, we have a nice group of people that apply. But when it comes to time to run, they don't usually show up. You know what I mean? So I, I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Hey, first, first of all, thank you to all the applicants and the three finalists for applying for the vacancy. Uh, any of the three finalists would serve very well to this board, district, and community and bring a unique set of experiences and qualifications. So thank you for your interest and your commitment. The board ranked each candidate, and I'm happy to announce that Kimberly Lupicheck will assume the two-year seat and serve on the personnel committee. So we need to have the appointment. Three point zero two. Uh, the Millcreek Township Board of School Directors appoints Kimberly Lupicheck to the two-year school board seat, left vacant by Gary Winchell, when he captured both the two-year and the four-year seat during the election. If I could have a motion, please?
Motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We need it further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. Congratulations. Three point zero three. Swearing in with the new board member, Ms. Sitter.
Right hand, and repeat after me.
Aye. Kimberly Lupicheck.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties.
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, again, thank you, everyone. Uh, now we'll move to the visitors' comments section. Uh, if you have any, Mrs. Sitter, how many speakers do you have?
We do know that we have some people who are interested. Um, those who wanted to speak for three minutes should raise their hand at this point. Okay, um, Janine Mattern. I'll take the first, first hand, I see.
Okay. So, Janine Mattern, uh, three minutes, Janine?
Thank you, Mr. Winchell. On Monday, it was stated that it would be too hard to go back to revise the already quarantined students and staff and their return dates. I just want to remind as educators what that sounds like to parents who had to take off work unpaid to sit home with their young children who, under the new guidelines, would be back at school. I want you to think about how that sounds to a student who's struggling virtually while quarantined when, under the new guidelines, they could be back at school. I want you to remember what that might sound like to athletes who are allowed to be in school, go to gym, sit in lunch, go to a packed prep basketball game, but cannot practice or play because it's too hard. If you change from Google Classroom, which I'm assuming the new survey that went out is about possibly changing to a new platform, and your staff came to you and said, no, it's too hard, would that be acceptable to you? Thank you for letting me speak. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Yes. Brian Kramer?
Hey, Brian, you have three minutes, Brian.
Hi, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Winchell, and thanks all aboard for letting me speak. Congratulations, uh, to Kimberly. I look forward to you representing our students and community. Uh, I know you're going to do a great job. Wish you the best of luck. Um, I'm going to be speaking tonight, kind of on what Janine just spoke about a little bit. Uh, I'm going to speak tonight on behalf of all of our student athletes who are currently quarantined and, you know, more specifically, our JV boys' basketball team. Uh, currently, our JV team is, is under quarantine effective January 5th due to two of our members testing positive for COVID, which means that our team has been quarantined already for over one week. Uh, this has caused us to miss three games, and they're now required to follow the guidelines of at least two practices before being permitted to return to play. This would place their earliest return under the guidelines as Tuesday, which would be almost two weeks without proper gym time. During the quarantine, we've had a number of players who were both vaccinated and asymptomatic while being in school, but continued to lose valuable practice time. You know, these vaccinated asymptomatic student athletes have been permitted to attend classes, attend school events, but have not been able to step foot in the gym. This begs the question, why? Why the double standard for students and student athletes? I understand completely and support the need for guidelines and the requirement for masks at school. I do not, however, support decisions that are made either counterintuitive or can't provide a rational explanation behind, behind the decision. We have the current guidelines that are recommended now request a five-day quarantine. The board agreed to a five-day quarantine. Why are we still requiring student athletes to maintain a 10-day period when many are not or have never been symptomatic? By all means, the students that have tested positive should remain in quarantine if necessary. Uh, if necessary, I completely agree. However, the majority of our team has already returned to school. Let the kids who are in school be allowed to practice. No straight answer has ever been gotten from an administrator or school board, other than it would be difficult to review all currently quarantined quick cases to adjust to the new guidelines. And this is quite simply a lazy and unacceptable answer. We hold our students, uh, you know, would we hold our students to the same expectations of not having to do homework because it was too difficult? No. Would we allow this answer from our teachers to provide to students and families with the same, it's too difficult answer? Absolutely not. Would that logic fly in any professional environment? No, it would not. Then why as a community and you as a school board not holding our district to the same standard we expect from everybody else? You know, our entire goal over guidelines within the district is to keep students safe and to allow them to return to a sense of normalcy as quickly and safely as possible. Then why would you punish student athletes who are asymptomatic and families who have taken the precautions of vaccinating their students? It's time to stop doing what's easy and start doing what's right for our students and our student athletes. If that's my time, I appreciate the time and wish everybody luck.
Thanks.
Thanks for listening.
Yep. Thank you.
Do we have another speaker? Alyssa McCollum?
Here, Alyssa. Okay, Alyssa, okay, okay. Alyssa, you're next. You have three minutes, Alyssa.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So at the last board meeting, I came with some fire to Westlake Middle School, and as a fire that I'm going to bring, I'm also going to apologize, because my son was not truthful about his work. It was there, he just decided not to do his work and was hiding his work from me. So I spoke with Mr. Caverman and Pam. I'm actually, I would bring my son there, but he's in a quarantine as well, a ten-day quarantine, because he needs to see what I do and how I will go hard for him, but I also want him to learn that you also need to apologize when you're wrong and untruthful. So I definitely want to issue an apology and change my letter grade from an F to Westlake back over to an A, because we ironed everything out and we got our issues solved, so I just wanted to let the, so I just wanted to let the board know that, that, you know, I do apologize, because now that I understand that my son was not truthful, I'm going to be holding him accountable as well, and he will be issuing an apology to Pam, that poor secretary who I unleashed on, as well. Thank you.
Thank you for circling back.
Good for you. That was greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Next.
We have Troy Proggy.
Troy, you have three minutes. Troy, you're muted. Okay, three minutes, Troy.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, you have three minutes.
Hey, I just wanted to say, there was a piece that came out in the local paper, and it stated that Breton Davis had met with the school superintendents on December 20th at the IU Five discussing the test-of-stay program and putting in like a hybrid type of system. I'm going to read a quote from Breton Davis. He said that he noticed superintendents were pouting because the countrywide mask mandate was going away, and he believed that they wanted to hide behind the county's policy and not have to face their constituents. I cannot agree with that statement anymore. And I wanted to say, too, that I noticed the other night that Mr. Roberts rattled off the cases that we had. Not one time has anybody on this board, including Mr. Roberts, ever talked about the cases. So I just want to say, nice touch on the clinics that we have going on, sandwiched in between all the school board meetings, raising the numbers, making it look like, "Oh, COVID's so bad, we got to keep these kids in masks." The transparency is really very poor. And I wanted to say, too, that I think it's sad that Mill Creek Township is actually quarantining healthy kids, and they're telling the parents to send the kids to the testing clinics at the bayfront to test them for COVID, to see if they could come back. How ridiculous is that? You're sending healthy kids home because they're close contact, and then you're telling them to go stand in line with people that might have COVID? Man, I'll tell you what, you guys, you guys got a lot of work to do to improve. That's all I got.
Thank you.
You see no other hands.
Okay, last call. Any additional three-minute speakers? Nope, hearing none, we'll move on. Item four, old business, any old business. Item five, new business, any new business. Item six, remarks, any remarks from the school board? Dr. Roberts, any remarks? Give you an opportunity.
Thank you, President Winchell. Certainly want to extend appreciation to Mr. Busco, Mr. Ward, for participating in sort of this process, to really to join this board, to serve this amazing community in one of the most critical roles that anyone can serve in. I'd like to extend congratulations to Mr. Lupicheck on being selected to the two-year seat. We're looking forward to have you on this board. I believe that the skills you bring in based on the review of your resume and your responses this evening would be a tremendous value add. I'm looking forward to working alongside you.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, take a motion for adjournment?
Janice.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against nay? Motion passes. We're adjourned. I think that's yours.